I want to apologize, the air conditioner is not working. But we did put out water for anybody who's want to hydrate you. So there's water free for taking over by the doors and hopefully with the lights down and the fans on, you'll be comfortable. So I want to, first of all, thank you all for coming tonight. If you don't know me, I'm Nancy Hodges, the president of the Old Bridge Animal Volunteers. I volunteered at the animal shelter for over three years. I ran with my girlfriend, my co-administer, the volunteer Facebook page up to recently. Hi, Maddie. And here we are tonight. Too bad it's not one of our fundraisers because I have a feeling that we do pretty well. We brought you here tonight though to address subtle concerns about the Old Bridge Animal Shelter. There's a small group of volunteers, both former and present, that have been attending council meetings for over one year, addressing concerns about the Old Bridge Animal Shelter. However, the real breaking point was when we learned about a dog named Romeo, who was brought to the shelter as a stray on February 17th, and his life was taken from him by the order of management only two and a half months after he was found. On February 17th, the following post appeared on the Old Bridge Animal Shelter Township page. This dog was found around 12:45 PM between Higgins and Tystown Road. He was wearing a choker type chain with a name tag Romeo, but it doesn't have a phone number. He's not my township, he's wearing a blue jacket. He's a neutered male. Please contact the Old Bridge Animal Shelter and they left a number. Then it appeared again on February 18th, saying that he was doing poorly in its shelter environment. This was only 24 hours after the dog was found, neutered, with a tag, and wearing a blue jacket. Nothing more was said until March 9th, when they used a picture of Romeo to entice people to buy toys from their Amazon wishlist. The post read, "Feeling generous? Would like to help the animals, but you're too busy and have no time? How about the dogs, how about buying the dog some indestructible toys like the one that Romeo was enjoying?" And then they gave you a link to do that. So this, all of this does not sound like a dog that is struggling or in danger of losing his life. On March 14th, the final post, he appeared in a group photo enjoying a snow day with three other dogs, the only three other dogs that were residents at the time of the shelter. Again, no red flags, no pleas for help, no distress signals were given that Romeo, someone's pet, was about to lose his life. On May 5th, only two and a half months after being found, only two and a half months, two and a half months of winter, which consisted of cold temperatures, rain, snow, ice, and very little outside time, Romeo's life was taken under the order of management at the Old Bridge Animal Shelter. At the time, he was one of four dogs. Romeo appeared on Pet Finder, and I'm using the township words. He's not doing well in the shelter environment, but once you get him outside, he's a different dog. He loves to run and play, he gives you his paw and takes treats gently from your hand. He needs a home that won't crink him. He has separation anxiety. He loves people. That's not a description of a dog that was facing a death sentence. That is not a description of a dog that was in danger to society. So let me reiterate, he was found neutered, wearing a collar, tags and a coat. This was somebody's pet. Romeo displayed stress, excuse me, within 24 hours of being put in a kennel, and that's very common for any house pet. If any of you own an animal, and I have two, if you brought them in the shelter right now, they would do extremely poor because they're used to being in a home environment. The shelter is a scary place. Doesn't matter how good your staff is and how good your volunteers are, it's a scary place for them. He only appeared on Facebook a total of four times. One was an advertisement for Amazon wishlist. No plea for help, no rescues were contacted, or if they did, they avoided contacting several right here in our town, including our group, we would have helped. Romeo's story is not unique, it happens all the time in shelters sadly, but what used to set Old Bridge Animal Shelter apart from the typical municipal shelter were two things, the volunteers and the level of community involvement. And throughout the years I volunteered at Old Bridge, we helped several dogs just like Romeo. To name a few, Tanner, we might know these from our Facebook, Bailey, Doobie, Ace, Matt, Mellow, Dozer, Trevor, Sweetie, Winky, Prince, Roxy, Onyx, Frank, Baby, Big Boy, Jax, Riley, Draculina, Peanut and Cashew, Anna the Horse, Waldo. Those were the heavy hitters, believe it or not. Every single dog that I just mentioned had expenses or needs above and beyond what was allotted by the township. But because of a cooperative relationship that existed between the volunteers, the community, and township personnel, every single one of those dogs received the help they needed to find a caring and loving home. They were not put down. Romeo was not given these options. In addition, our group helps spay and neuter any animal that came into the shelter that was not fixed. This is something that is currently not covered by the township, and now animals are leaving the shelter unaltered. We did this at absolutely no cost to the taxpayer. It was done through donations, fundraising, special discounts that our group received for being a state-registered 501(c)(3) charity. We helped fundraisers, TGI Fridays, Texas Roadhouse, we hosted murder mystery dinners at the MJ's in Buttonwood, we even had a wine tasting fundraiser. We had benefit kickboxing class with the help of Matts. We organized fund drives at Old Bridge Day, marched in parade with donation cans, thank you Patty, and hosted special adoption specials. At one time, we hosted 100% spay and neuter in the entire shelter, and that was at absolutely no cost to the taxpayer. As a 501(c)(3) charity, we're entitled to special discounts. These discounts are not offered to the township with local veterinarians. We have relationships with Country Animal Clinic, Madawan Animal Hospital, East Brunswick Animal Hospital, Red Bank Behavioral Animal Hospital, Little Silver Veterinary, and North Star Animal Hospital. Right now, at this present time, the Old Bridge Animal Shelter is operating without a town veterinarian. That was confirmed today. We utilized trainers, too many to list individually. We educated the public by hosting training sessions to the public. Dogtopia donated one of their playrooms for this use. And speaking of Dogtopia, they fostered numerous dogs for us. They provided endless hours of daycare to those dogs that were able to fit their criteria, in other words, were dog friendly. We provided daily outings for the residents at the shelter. I prefer to call them residents or pets. It included trips to groomers, and you would sometimes see us hiking through Cheesequake, Cheesequake State Park. This was a dream come true to any shelter animal to get out of that environment. Fast forward to now, according to our mayor and the former business administrator, the shelter is in the best condition it's ever been. How? When the community and the volunteer group were actively involved with the medical costs, the outside cost of rabies and disper vaccinations, all expenses were covered at absolutely no expense to the taxpayer. This included special dietary needs, blood work, any and all medical needs or training needs. Now the taxpayer assumes 100% of these costs, 100%. Not to mention that each shelter pet is limited to the amount of medical it receives under the constraints that are set forth by the township. Lisa will go into a little bit more detail on that later. This is absolutely unnecessary. We have repeatedly told her that our group is willing to cover medical costs such as spay and neuter, as we have done in the past. However, there's been no response to our emails since April of 2016, that's over a year ago. As a result, the adoption fees have increased. It used to be $25 to $50 for an adult cat, now it's 75 to 185. For a kitten, it used to be $75. Now kittens are anywhere from $9 to $5 and up. The average, and this will be confirmed by one of our speakers tonight, the average price for a dog is presently $150 plus any medical fees that incur. It used to be between 75 and 125, and the dog would always leave spayed or neutered for no additional fee because we donated that cost. And as well as the cats, there was no cat that left spayed or neutered, that left intact. They were all spayed and neutered. The staff went from one full-time employee and one part-time employee to three full-time employees and two part-time employees. Again, another cost to the taxpayer. The animal shelter is overseen by the captain of the police department, and now a second person was just recently assigned by the police department, I believe a lieutenant. The budget has increased. The only thing that has decreased over there is the number of volunteers. That went from 25 regular volunteers to just a handful, and many are sporadic or just on weekends. I just learned today that the number of volunteers, that the number of dog volunteers there this week has been zero. So it was a beautiful day out today, gorgeous, perfect for dog walking. You used to see us walk through the complex at least three or four times a day. Not one of those dogs got walked today. And this can be easily verified by just going in and checking the daily volunteer logs. Perhaps the most devastating blow of all was when I learned that three of our longtime volunteers left the shelter after Romeo was put down. These volunteers were there almost daily. They formed bonds with the dogs, provided exercise and love. One volunteer also made frozen cons for the dogs so that they had something to do during the day, the long hours at night when the shelter closed at 3:00 PM until the next morning. Now they no longer receive their frozen cons, they no longer receive their daily walks or their daily luck. There used to be a rotation schedule. All dogs got added, all animals, not just dogs, all animals got added their page on a daily basis. Without volunteers, this is not happening. The community was involved. If there's one thing that I have learned about Old Bridge is that we're a generous and giving community. When a need presents itself, we always rise to the challenge. There was never a shortage of donations, there was never a shortage of hands, there was never a shortage of support. So what happened? We need to fix this, and they can't wait. Romeo didn't have to die. We're a population of over 66,000 in Old Bridge. There were only four dogs at the shelter at the time they took Romeo's life. We would have helped. We would have pulled together to find Romeo a foster or boarding in a home setting as we had done before, training or more exercise. No one asked for help, no one knew about Romeo. The mayor recently rendered a statement explaining that they took the advice of professionals and decided to end Romeo's life on the advice of professionals. However, there have been several instances that I personally know about firsthand where the advice of professionals was blatantly ignored. So this doesn't hold water with me, and it shouldn't hold water with you. Whether you're an animal lover or not, the entire scenario doesn't make sense. If you're a resident of Old Bridge, you should demand answers and you should demand better for our animals. This us against them attitude has to stop, and I don't even know how or when it started. I've been serving this community for nearly 15 years as a volunteer in some aspect, shape, or form. Hasn't always been with the animal shelter, the last three years were with the animal shelter. I've always felt it to be an honor to give back to the community, and I have never been treated like the enemy. And not only baffles me, it concerns me. I looked back at my emails today, and there were hundreds. Several were asking them to look into the situation more closely before it got out of hand. By then, I mean central administration. I also copied the council people, I've also copied the mayor, I've copied the business administrator. Animals are suffering without medical, and now they are dying. We're here to change that tonight. And before I turn the microphone over to Lisa, I just want to bring your attention that we made copies of the volunteer applications for the animal shelter. We plan to present these to our next town meeting, so if anyone is interested in volunteering, please fill out an application. We want to present it in bold form to the council, saying that the community wants to help, they want to volunteer, so why are there zero dog walkers over at the animal shelter this week? Thank you for listening, thank you for coming tonight. And I want to introduce Lisa Lent, our treasurer and the person responsible for organizing most of our most successful fundraisers. Thank you.
She's a tough act to follow. No pressure here. As Nancy stated earlier, I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I think it's absolutely fantastic that we have this many animal lovers in our community, especially the Boy Scout troop in which joined us. I always love when the youth participate in stuff like this. A little something about myself. Well, as Nancy said, my name is Lisa Lent-Miller, and I am the treasurer of the Old Bridge Animal Shelter Volunteers Organization. Everyone decides for different reasons why they want to volunteer. For me, it was the passing of my dog Sparky. He was my best friend and he brought me so much joy that when I lost him, I was lost. So one Saturday afternoon, I went to the animal shelter to look. I thought it would be a depressing, dirty place, similar to all those ASPCA commercials you see on TV and you change the channel really quick. But when I entered the shelter, I was greeted by multiple volunteers. They were friendly, outgoing, truly amazing people. The shelter itself was clean and the animals looked really well cared for. The volunteers showed me around, and I could instantly tell the love they had for the animals. I wanted to be part of this, so I filled out an application, one application, and one week later, I was approved and I was volunteering. Shortly after joining this amazing group, similar to Romeo, there was a dog named Riley that needed help. He was stressing and acting out. There was never a conversation about putting him down. The volunteers and staff worked together and made a plan. We sent him for training at Bully Behaven, where he learned basic skills while living in someone's home. Riley did amazing under Mike's care and was adopted shortly after. Money was never an issue with us. If an animal needed care, we would just have a fundraiser. As Nancy mentioned, we hosted wine tasting, fundraising nights at multiple restaurants, and our famous murder mystery dinners. The first murder mystery dinner we sold out within three weeks and had 90 guests. And neutered over 100 animals, and not a penny coming from the taxpayers. Approximately four years ago, and I pulled all this information, all the math off the oldbridge.com website, the township website. Four years ago, the shelter salaries for one full-time employee, one part-time employee totaled $75,000. The captain at the time made approximately $100,000. So the salaries four years ago totaled $175,000. But the township people paid very little else. We covered everything. Fast forward to present day, and again, these are their figures, three full-time employees totaled $153,000. Two part-time employees totaled $40,000, and the current captain makes over $160,000. So, the yearly salaries went from $175,000 to $353,000. I'm not the best at math, and I'm definitely not the smartest person in the room, but that's doubled within four years. But yeah, the shelter hours haven't changed, the animals don't get more exposure, they don't get more attention. It seems as the salaries and personnel increased, the quality of life for the animals decreased. I don't want you to think that the ACOs and all the employees of the shelter are bad. The ACOs truly love these animals. They are constantly faced with administration issues and budget issues that prevent them from caring for the animals like they want to. Take Jupiter for instance, the cat at the heart of the animal cruelty charges currently facing the shelter director, a cat who needed major dental work. The ACOs could not help Jupiter because there was no money in the budget, as they were told. The volunteers would have never allowed Jupiter to suffer for months. Only receiving help when the NJSPCA stepped in and forced the township with these charges, did the township finally offer up the money to help Jupiter. The animal shelter budget, again from their website, went from $160,000 to $200,000 to $220,000 plus. This is all paid for by you, your tax dollars. When you wonder why your taxes are going up, this is one of many reasons. Instead of evaluating the shelter and looking at what they can do to fix it, they are just wasting your money and just giving it more money and more employees in hopes that it would get better when it's not. There is a $5,000 cap on the medical budget for the animal shelter. This is not per animal, this is not per month, this is $5,000 total for all the animals for the entire year. Again, for those of you who aren't good at math, let's break it down. A $220,000 budget, $353,000 in salaries, and only $5,000 goes to the animals' medical care. The volunteers spent that on Waldo alone. His ear surgery cost over $5,000. And anyone who has owned an animal knows that $5,000 goes very quickly when the animal is sick. When the volunteers questioned this, we were shut out. When I personally went line item by line item on the published township budget, asking questions on where my and your tax dollars go, I was told I was no longer welcome to volunteer. So just to recap, their salaries doubled, their staff doubled, your tax dollars have increased. They turn away on an average $10,000 to $15,000 from our volunteer group. Next time you vote, I want you to think of a couple questions. I want you also, when you hear the administration and the mayor on the council meetings knocking us down, wonder to yourself, where is my tax money going? What are you doing to help improve the Old Bridge Animal Shelter? Why are you not taking donations? I know if someone knocked on my door offering me 10 grand, I would take it. Why are they not taking the free help volunteers offer? You do not have to double your employees if you accept free volunteer help. Why are they not doing the right things by our animals and by you guys? You guys are their boss. You pay the tax dollars. You should be able to ask why. That's all I have to say. Nancy was a hard speech to follow, but I didn't want to take up too much of your time. We have more people to speak, so I'm going to turn the microphone back over to Nancy. Thank you all.
Just because I'm seeing a lot of timid faces, just by showing hands, who was formerly, or whoever volunteered at the Old Bridge Animal Shelter, just put your hand up. Okay, who is still volunteering there? I just, you know, just, I just wanted to do that, that's really sad, that's kind of sad. All right, I said enough, so I'm going to bring up our first guest speaker, Mark Mizoli. Come on up. And you can introduce yourself up side.
I just want to apologize in advance, I'm recovering from a sore throat, so if I get on the last day, I apologize. So my name's Mark Mizoli, I'm running for council on Board Four. Give you a little background on myself, I've been in Jersey, police officer, now detective for 26 years. And I can tell you that I said I wouldn't want to be in charge of an animal shelter, that's for sure. I have a cat and a dog, my cat I rescued literally as a kitten on the street to Jersey City, the New York Avenue. My dog was a rescue from the Summit, New Jersey Rescue, via from southern part of the country, a colleague of mine volunteered his time there. I'm going to get right into it. I can tell you that Mayor Henry has a serious problem between fact and fiction. Once you question anything him or his political allies do, you're immediately deanimating. So I'm not surprised that you have been turned away, your donations and volunteers have been turned away because I've been at council meetings where you questioned them. So I can tell you when I put out my press release calling for the suspension of Mrs. Chen, the mayor immediately said, "It's not nice to attack public employees." So my translation to that is, "It's not nice to attack a political ally." But my response also is, "It's not nice to mistreat animals." I can tell you, him and his administration is a disgrace. I'm about opening doors, not slamming on people. We have a councilwoman with two assault charges on her. This is not representative of our great community, they're an embarrassment. I have been, I've had the families directed at me twice at council meetings because I have questioned some serious things that they have done. I can tell you a person in the past that had assigned to the animal shelter shot a cat.
Yeah, I know, we had a private conversation about that.
And what was the outcome of that? Was the prosecutor's office notified about discharging a weapon? I mean, there's just a lot of questions about that. At the end of the day, Mayor Henry is incompetent, and I can tell you one way to deal with it is by voting him and his cronies out. I can tell you my door will always be open for you. I'm about opening doors, not slamming on people. Thank you for your time, and like I said, you always have a commitment from me. Thank you.
Next up is Maddie. He did sign off, this isn't a surprise.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who know me, my name is Maddie Callejano, I'm the chaplain of the Monmouth County SPCA. Nice and casual, I'm trying to blend in this evening, it would be an urban environment, and take all of this in. For a long time, I had a wonderful relationship with the Old Bridge Animal Shelter, and that was prior to the current shelter director taking her position. I always thought that the Old Bridge Animal Shelter was the nicest little shelter in New Jersey, was really the best way to describe it. Although I've always had a problem with where townships end up placing their animal shelters, they always place them next to the recycling center. That's always bothered me. And it's not just in Old Bridge, they do that everywhere, as if like these are recycled items, as if these are disposable items, you know? Drop off your used car battery and your used tire, and next door is a used cat or a dog. So that always bothered me, but nevertheless, despite that image, I always felt that the Old Bridge Shelter was able to shine. And I had established a relationship down in South Carolina with the St. Francis Animal The euthanasia rate, the live release rate for the Monmouth County SPCA is 97%. That means for every 1,000 animals that come in our door, 970 of them go out to a loving home. That would only mean that 30 are euthanized, and that would be for expensive medical or behavioral issues where they would pose a threat or a danger to the welfare of the community. The St. Francis Animal Shelter down in Georgetown, South Carolina, had a live release rate of 76%, which for anyone who's familiar with the South, is tremendous, because South Carolina's entire statewide live release rate is only 17%. Okay? So for every 1,000 animals that they are bringing, only 170 are going out to loving homes. And it always bothered me with St., what bothered me with St. Francis is that they were never able to get help from a lot of shelters in our jurisdiction, in terms of fostering and finding and bringing dogs out of their facility and up here to the north, because so many of our facilities up here felt that since they were doing so well, these animals were relatively safe. And I established a wonderful relationship with them, and at no cost to the shelter, since the shelter was relatively empty. I was having dogs transported up to the Old Bridge Animal Shelter, from the St. Francis Animal Shelter, and these were all wonderful, loving, caring, good dogs. And once the new shelter director came in, that entire relationship ended. At some point, I even had developed a relationship between the Associated Humane Societies of New Jersey and the Old Bridge Animal Shelter. And we would transfer animals from their Titten Falls facility, or their Newark facility, or Fork and River facility, to the Old Bridge Animal Shelter. Sometimes with these animals, I'm sure many of you know, when they are exposed to a new light, and they're seen by a different group of people, all of a sudden, these dogs that may have flanquished in a shelter for months, now all of a sudden get adopted with their week. And when I was bringing these dogs up, I noticed on the list of animals that you were referring to, one of them was Prince. Prince came from the Associated Humane Societies. My daughter picked him out and said, "Daddy, let's bring this one." So I said, "Okay, sure." So it was nice that I see that Prince was adopted into a wonderful home, and I'm friends with this woman on Facebook, and I follow Prince's daily activities, and that's a reward for me. As I'm sure for many of the people who weren't volunteers there, it was a reward for you. As I'm sure for many of the people who weren't volunteers there, it was a reward for you when you would see these animals that you thought in the back of your mind would never get a home, that ended up going into a wonderful, loving, caring, nurturing home and thriving and being the animals that they were supposed to be their entire lives, that they never had the opportunity to become until you stepped in, until you became part of the solution instead of part of the problem. Listening to everything that's been said, I have to tell you, we have about 500 volunteers at the Monmouth County SPCA and only 75 to 80 employees. The volunteers are all lifeblood. Without the volunteers, the Monmouth County SPCA would not be the facility that it is. I think Old Bridge has every right to turn away volunteers if they want to. They have every right to turn away donations if they want to. They have every right to turn away money if they want to. That to me is not the question that needs to be addressed and answered by the administration here in Old Bridge. What needs to be addressed and answered is with a $220,000 budget that is separate from the salaries, what is going on with that other $215,000? Where is that $215,000 being spent? And why is it that if they were in need of funding, that they don't then utilize the volunteers for help? Look, you want to turn them away, by all means, go right ahead. But the question that the residents of this community have to ask, and I am not a resident of Old Bridge, so it would be improper for me to ask. But the residents that are here tonight and the council members that are taking the time out of their busy schedules to attend and listen to the concerns of the community have got to try to figure out exactly where that $215,000 extra thousand dollars is being spent. If they want to become the crappiest little shelter in New Jersey instead of the brightest little shelter in New Jersey, that's up to them. And then it's up to you as the community to demand more. Because if I lived in Old Bridge, I would, no question about it. There's no need for this. There's no need for this type of lack of concern and consideration for the residents in a state like New Jersey. Because if this were down in the South, in South Carolina, well, then that's what I would expect. All right? And I've seen what a wonderful job they can do when they really put their minds to it. So the same thing can happen here. It's really just a matter of you questioning where that money is being spent and why it is that these animals are not getting the time, love, and attention that they deserve, that they had before. If you're willing to do it, then things will change. You know, things don't change by sending emails and Facebook. Things change by action. And you have to be willing to act. You know, I mean, you have my personal support as Maddie Giuliani. No ifs, ands, or buts about it, because I saw some amazing, miraculous, wonderful things happen there when we were bringing in these other animals. Okay? For a shelter that, you know, only service is Old Bridge. They're not a shared service facility where, you know, hey, listen, we're overcrowded, we're over this, we're over that. That's not their situation. And I saw wonderful things happen and amazing animals go out to them. Amazing, in fact, you have one. Lisa has Lola.
Princess Lola.
And Lola.
Princess Lola.
And Lola came from the St. Francis Animal Center. Does anybody else adopt it from the Old Bridge facility here? Okay, who did you adopt?
Oh, the cat years ago. She's still with us, which was about 10 years ago.
Wonderful.
Sonia, you were there?
Yes. Who else? Who did you get?
I have Grady.
Grady was the cat that the volunteer fire department rescued from the grape, and they named him Grady. And that's what she, a little armed cat.
Who else? Who else? Yes.
They put up an ad of this really, it's called Scaredy Cat. And the cat's fur was all, like, the meanest, meanest. It was the cutest cowlicked nipple. And we have her now for seven years. And if you would have seen the picture, whoever did the photography, it was great. But the cat was out like a crazy.
Who else? I saw another ad, yes.
These are for our cats. Actually, I found Bayward out of the cat. She got sick. We forced her.
And has been living with you ever since. And who else?
I have two fosters that I took home when I was volunteering.
You have two fosters that you took home when you were volunteering, and you still have. Now, based on everything that's transpired over the past couple of months, all right, and with the lack of people who no longer wish to participate at the Old Bridge Animal Shelter, who here would even go there looking for a pet at this point? And that's a sad statement. That's a sad statement that none of you here tonight who are so concerned over the welfare of this facility won't even go there to look for an animal because you know already by now how crappy things have gotten. And this is what you have, you have got to demand this change. You have got to be able to stand up for what you feel is right, for what you feel is just, not for your tax dollars. Because you want to know something, even if that was completely and totally explained to every one of you, your taxes will not go down. I promise you. I assure you. So you're not standing up for your tax dollars. You're standing up for the animals that potentially may become future residents of that facility. So I'm asking you all to please ask for guidance, pray for guidance, and find the appropriate answer here tonight as to how you are going to continue to further address this issue. Okay? I'd like to thank you all for your time and may the Lord continue to give you peace. Thank you.
Next up is Dr. Reber.
Hi, everyone. Thank you all for coming out this evening. And above all, thank you for the volunteers. I recognized many years ago that that facility would not function without the volunteers that we have. And they did an amazing job. When I would go there, I wouldn't have to worry. I know all the needs of the animals were being taken care of and being addressed. And I said, "Wow, I would love volunteers like that at my animal clinic to make it function much better." And not only that, the caring, the compassion, the dedication, and really to make it different. And to tell you the truth, it's very sad that I'm a councilwoman and I stand here tonight and I tell you, I do not know what happened. I do not understand what changed. I do not understand why these volunteers are turned away, why the town's not accepting these things. And that's an embarrassment to me because I've asked that question multiple times, time and time again. I've had private meetings with the mayor, the chief of the police, the captain in charge. It's very frustrating for the police department. They don't want to be put in that position. I've actually said, "Put it back to the health department again. Don't use the resources of a state farm." I've made multiple suggestions about volunteers. I've talked about training. These issues have fallen on deaf ears, and I am embarrassed that I do not have the answers for you, and I do not know why. I do not know why you would turn away people who are making a positive difference. I do not understand how you can fire a volunteer. It makes no sense to me. But I can tell you what changed. We did get a director in there, a coordinator. I've asked their function. I've asked what happened. I asked their training. I ask, sometimes it's sad for that person that probably with all good intentions, they got that position, they wanted to do well. But as you all know, even with yourself, if you're put in a situation, you don't have the skill set. It becomes very frustrating. And that person, if doesn't have it, it's not her job, it's the administration's job to change that and make that person either better in their position or realize that every person isn't the right person for the position that they've been applied to. But I do want to say with that, also at the same time, when people come up in front of the council, we're put in a very difficult situation. I cannot talk about... Animals are not cared for the way they should be. To live out your life in a cage, that's horrible. I'll tell you, at my hospital, I've gone in a cage myself and I looked out through those bars and I said, "Could you imagine looking through that day in and day out, not getting exercise?" Sure. And animals are anything, they want to be fed, but they also need human contact. And I've talked about programs in this town. Everyone knows shared services make things better. I presented a very simple thing, combining with the Board of Ed. It would have been a great project. The Board of Ed was willing to work with me. If you have a program that is to adopt a highway, you can adopt a pet. Each class can get a picture of their pet, and they will work hard to find a home for that pet. They could fundraise for that pet. They can have a celebration when it's adopted. And that is the best social media out there. That fell on deaf ears. So it is very frustrating to me that these problems have existed. But more so, to hear the good work. I was so honored when I met the individuals, Nancy Hodges, Lisa Lent. Lisa, I look around this room, there's amazing people. And that they're being turned away to do the work, it's insulting, it's disgusting, and I don't have an answer for you. I've gone to private meetings, I'll tell you time and again, and it is very frustrating, as just as you heard at council meeting, that it's wonderful. It's not wonderful. But I can tell you also this, there are people that have the wrong approach to solve a problem. You cannot do that from using foul language, cursing, putting vulgar things on Facebook, Twitter, whatever you do. That will accomplish nothing. And sadly, there are individuals to do that. I've done it. People put things on Facebook negative about me. It's disgusting. You have a problem, come address it with me. I am always battling, even my own party, that they stoop to that level. It's disgusting. They say it's politics? No. Politics should be about people, the taxpayers, the residents, and making the town better. And if you can't stand on your record and do positive things, then get out. If you want to use that letter, get out. So the bottom line is, sadly, when that started happening, when people were using vulgarity and using Facebook and Twitter and emails and saying disgusting things, good people got tied up in that situation also. And that's when the door got slammed on a lot of positive things. So if you want a positive change, be positive. It may be gradual, it may be one day at a time, but you will get there. And I make a promise to you from this day forward that there are happen meetings, we're moving forward with the TNR, the formed committee, that the township will be involved in this, residents will be involved. There is a separation from the TNR and the shelter. But the shelter will not fall short because many people work many hours to make it better. And we will get those answers. And it is a shame that this administration has not addressed it for over a year. And with your help and being positive, we can make positive changes. Thank you very much.
What a shy girl. Deep breath.
Well, my thing is for today, I was in the shelter. I'm one of the last volunteers there. And every day I go in, it rips out my heart, I'm not going to lie. There's like three of us, Jen being one of them. You know, there's a couple, but not many for all the animals that are in there. So today, a man came in, a young man, he's like 20 years old. He came in and he was very interested in Dallas. This was actually yesterday. I was there yesterday as well. Dallas, to give you a little background on Dallas, he's about nine or 10 months old, right, Jen? He has a head that goes like this, so he's not perfect. He's black. And right there, those are three things against Dallas, especially in a shelter during kitten season. So I was thrilled. I was thrilled that this guy came in, fell in love with Dallas. I said, "Oh, my God, definitely." So of course, I'm selling Dallas. Dallas is great, oh, my God, I got him under the cage. Okay. Came back today, he said to me, yesterday, he says to me, "How much is Dallas to adopt?" My heart sank. I said, "Here's this young kid, 20, like my daughter." "No money, you know, college kid, whatever." I said, "I don't know." I said, "Just come back, and whatever it is, we'll work it out. I'll figure it out." So came back today, I was so happy. I didn't think he was going to show because I think he got nervous or whatever about the price. He came back today. I said to him, "Got to go in and ask, how much is this adoption fee?" Well, he went in and all I heard was $155. Okay? 10 months old, black cat, side head, I don't know where that came from, in the middle of kitten season. I said, "Please, do not tell this kid $155." He doesn't have the money. Lives in Glenwood. There's 1,000 cats in Glenwood. He can pick one up off the floor, I'm afraid. Okay? But he came to our shelter willing to save a life. So me and another volunteer decided to pay towards it. And no sooner did we say, you know, "We will pay towards it, we'll put $50 towards it." We figured $100, no more than that. That's all, you know, I felt that that was fair. Okay? Number two. First of all, that was terrible. We went through it, though. I said, with that, the coordinator called me and said, "What did you tell this kid?" And I said, "Well, I don't know, like, where are we going with this?" She said, "Did you tell him you were going to give him something?" I said, "Oh, yeah, can you just give him one of the litter boxes that I brought in?" I bring in things as I buy them. I go to PetSmart, I buy everything. Right? She said, "Well, you can't do that." I said, "Why not? Give him a litter box. There's 50 of them on top of the thing with the 500 cages that are on top of there. Once you give to the shelter, it's no longer your property. You can't tell them you can handle it." I said, "You know what? I'll give you the $5 for the, I'll bring you another one tomorrow. Can you give the..." To me, it was like, I wanted this adoption to go through so bad that I was willing to do anything. I said, "All I remember is where I used to, I used to volunteer, we used to give a little goody bag, you know?"
We used to make goody bags.
Yeah, you know, like, "Here, here's your plates, and, you know, here's some toys, break them into their new home." So different now. Every time I walk in that shelter, I walk out with tears in my eyes. I kid you not. But it's going to change.
Let me ask you something.
Yes.
Because I have a girl scout troop.
Yes.
They're moms of work. They're making like air packages that will be given out with animals that will be adopted. Now, they're intending on donating. Were you saying that...
I have zero power in that shelter.
No, I understand, but I mean, is that...
I would think that's a beautiful gesture. I sure hope they would do that. That would be a beautiful thing.
Yeah, I'm saying, look, we donated them because they wanted to give them to Sammy's Hope.
Yeah.
But they want to give some to Old Bridge. If they were to give some to Old Bridge, do you think that Old Bridge would charge?
No, I hope not. It's not that bad. I want to believe it's not that bad. And you know what? As I said, I'm still there. Jen's still there. I will, I'll do it out of my trunk if I have to. Nobody's in the charts. I assure you. So it would be a beautiful gesture.
Good job, Missy.
I just want to address one thing with the troop. When you donate stuff, a good majority of the time, it either sits upstairs until it expires and then gets thrown out, or it goes right out the back door. There was a council meeting in which I spoke about it. We could figure out what day it was so that all of you could pull it up on YouTube. From that point, we pushed them on it. There was an entire second floor full. And we have Walter, one of the volunteers here, which, while I was at work, filled my driveway with the donations to get it out of the second floor. Because they finally said, "Well, if you want it, take it and do what you want with it." We donated to about 15 different rescues, including Husky House, Sammy's Hope, and a bunch of other great local places. I think it's amazing if your troop wants to volunteer and gather goods to donate.
So they're working on it, or why?
Talk to Lorena at Husky House. Call up Sammy's Hope. Have them donate there.
We call the Monmouth SPCA.
They go. There are at least 10 to 20 local rescues that would love to have your donation. And I'm not saying these animals aren't worthy of it. I'm just saying it doesn't always get to the animals.
Why not? Why not?
Well, there's not enough of us. Because of them, not because of us.
They're because of them, not because of us.
It truly comes in the front door, gets shifted onto the second floor, and gets the gun.
Sure.
Do you have a question? First, come on the panelists, we didn't put, why are we supposed to do this?
What I would suggest is, we have a bunch more speakers, but at the end of tonight, I want all of you to go back and think about it. What can you do to help? Attend council meetings, get your voice heard, email the mayor, call the mayor's office, visit the shelter and see firsthand what we're saying.
Also, assign a sign-in sheet so that... There's a sign-in sheet that's going around. Please make sure you sign it with contact information. This way, if we do get together some form of petition even, a public petition, if we can get a list of things that we want addressed at the next council meeting. If you're not able to make it there in person, you can, I can at least notify you via email and we can get it together that way.
There is power in numbers.
There's power in numbers.
And right now, we're a small group of volunteers that go every single council meeting. And we're looked at really right now as, oh God, they're bad. We're not being heard anymore. So there is power in numbers. You want to help, come hang out with me at the next council meeting. I'll be there. Get your voice heard, stand up and ask. Say, you know, what's happening? I'm hearing all this. What is your take on it, Mr. Mayor? We have application forms here, sign an application to volunteer. Because we plan on going in with a bulk amount of applications and saying, why are none of these applications being approved? And we're open for other suggestions. If you have any suggestions on how we can improve and how we could better and get our voice heard, by all means, come up here and share them. We're open to hear everyone's thought. Adrian from Dogtopia, I believe, was next on the list? I think Adrian, and then Kathleen. We have a list, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the relationship that we've had with the Olbridge Shelter, particularly with the volunteers. It was a very different shelter a few years ago, I guess before the current administration. The whole energy was different. At Dogtopia, we actually fostered or gave dog-friendly shelter dogs a day to play or a week away from the shelter. And it was the volunteers that did this, that brought these dogs to us. We depended on the volunteers to bring us dogs that were good, Dogtopia candidates. And I just loved getting those calls from Nancy that she was coming over with a surprise for me. Which I knew was a very surprise. Most of the time, the dogs stayed more than the day. Nancy started to know that she should come with food. And the ACL knew that we weren't giving the dog that that day. It made no sense to us, given that the shelter closed at 3:00 and we could keep these dogs. We had somebody outside till 9:30, they got to play. Some of these dogs were adopted by members of our own team. We became very attached to them. Others were adopted due to the publicity on our website and also the Olbridge Shelter's Facebook page, which was run by the volunteers. Cards that we made of the shelter dogs playing with dogs at Dogtopia were put on their kennels so that people who came to see them when they were at the shelter could see what they were like out of the shelter environment. And I really felt like we were part of a team working to get these dogs adopted. We also hosted, participated, and promoted to our clients a number of fundraising events. We had a wine tasting in our toy box room. We did picture days, murder mystery programs, among others. We participated and promoted the murder mystery program. And the shelter had a wonderful reputation. Today, we have no idea what dogs are at the shelter and we have no relationship with them at all because we don't have that volunteer connection anymore. And I believe this is true of most of the community at this point. Banning volunteers who only want to help is not the answer to maintaining control of the shelter. Egos should not be put before the welfare of the animals. A good group of volunteers is essential to a well-run shelter. They are the ones who have made the animals real for so many of us, doing posting videos, having an active Facebook page, getting out there at events and bringing dogs with them. It would be easy just to give up and step back from the shelter for these volunteers, move on to other things, join groups who appreciate volunteers. But that's how dedicated this group is. They keep fighting for the animals. Why? I'm a big quote person, so I'm just going to end with this, because saving one animal won't change the world, but for that one animal, the world will change forever.
Next up is Colleen.
Hi, good evening, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Colleen Ronfo. I am the founder of the Reformers, the organization that went after Helmeta, and the storage, and just cops. So I've been doing this for two and a half years now, and trust me, I understand the frustration level in this room. What I am going to say to you is that based on my experience and based on the way that we've operated, in order to accomplish what you need to accomplish, I'm going to challenge everybody in this room to come to the next board meeting and bring one additional person with you. Having Lisa and Nancy and Patty and Sue and the rest of them show up there every month is great, but I will tell you from experience, it's, oh God, not them again. And that's exactly what it is. And if you want to make a difference, you're going to have to come in numbers, you're going to have to come prepared with a list of questions. I don't, I think it's five minutes you get to speak. Use your whole five minutes. I don't care if you just stand up there and babble. Use your whole five minutes. Because they have to stay as long as there's somebody in the audience that wants to talk. And we used to have 60, 70 people at Helmet meetings and we would make every person take their three minutes, even if they stood there and just stared down the mirror. Because they have to stay. So keep that in mind. I mean, it sounds crazy. The other thing you might want to think about doing, and I'll be more than happy to put it together for you if you want, you need to start showing up as a shelter in numbers with picket signs on Route 516. We got the most press coverage, we had the most reporters come out, we got the most people to come out. When we were standing on that sidewalk out front with pictures of the animals that Michael Ricci Cellos had put to sleep, or that Nancy Morton had ordered killed, or animals that were there that were missing, that people were looking for, that sat in that shelter for six, eight months before anybody would even call somebody to tell them their animals there, that's how you get the media exposure. Trust me, if everybody here, and I don't care picket colors, it's going to be the blue, everybody get a shirt, you all go out there, we picked orange when we did ours, stands out. And you stand out there with the picket sign and you're on both sides of Route 516 on public property, police department can't do anything about it as long as there's not a riot going on, as long as you're standing there and it's a peaceful protest, and you will get the media coverage that you want. The best we got was when we were standing out there and I was holding a sign that said, held your shelter. And that wound up being on the front page of all these newspapers all over Middlesex County and online. It's the best thing you can do. The other thing that you can do, and I'll be more, again, I'm more than willing to do this, I can have my attorney come and do it with you guys, is to over-request the documents. Over-request the mayor's emails, over-request the town council's emails, over-request Captain Andola's emails. It's public record. They're, you're their boss, they're not yours. And you have to take that into account and you have to get together, get the emails. We found things in emails that you wouldn't even believe, that you would think to yourself, my God, are these people this real? Are they serious? They're putting this in an email? But they did. They put it in the emails and every one of those emails brought something else. And that's where you're going to find your corruption and that's how you're going to stop all of this from happening. I mean, it's a long process, I understand that. The other thing too is, is that if you're going to the shelter, take your camera with you. They cannot stop you from taking a picture or videos. It is a public building, it is on a public piece of property. They cannot stop you. They tried in Helmeta, they tried to put an ordinance in. And they tried to do the ordinance saying that it was going to get $2,000 fine if I snapped a picture on the inside of the shelter, the ACL, you jumped in. It's illegal. It's your First Amendment right. It is a public facility, those are public employees being paid by your tax dollars. So make sure that you go.